It's January 29th at 7:00 PM. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Welcome, everyone. I would like to welcome Andy Olling as a new member from North Hero.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. He came and checked us out at one meeting, and I guess we didn't scare him away. Go around with introductions. Kirk Wade from Georgia. Lerwin Bakersmore.
Sylvia Jensen, Iowa.
Alicia LaRocque, Fairfield.
Harold Garrett, Harrisburg. Brad Dorchett, Fairfax.
Sarah Hadd, Town Colchester.
Howard Devries, Grand Isle.
Barclay Morris, Grand Isle.
It's more of a pull, it's a lecture. You know, it's, you know, it's, sorry.
I was thinking you might be in the wrong place.
Good.
I'm afraid it was a culture.
Timlin from the staff. Egan Murphy, Franklin County youth member.
Albo Joe Zero was down.
Joe Barnum from South Hero.
Pauline Steen, Fairfax.
Richard Noel from Engle.
Rolena Brown from Ridgefield.
Andy Olling, North Hero.
Yvonne Dandran, Franklin.
Vince Piggy, Berkshire.
Bob German, South Hero.
Neil Spear, Swan Village.
Catherine Demetrius, staff.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out on a chilly evening. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to the minutes. We need to take a look at the minutes of October and December. October, any errors or omissions? Yes.
I was not at October's meeting, but I've been reading it. It looks on line 28. It says second change workforce. I wish to say second chance. This is mid-picking one.
Thank you. Got a motion to approve October minutes with that change. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. December 2019, errors or omissions? Make the motion as the minutes have written. I get a second. Got a second from Al. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Commission reports. Finance and operations, Harold.
We have not met for the finance meeting, but a date was set today. So we are meeting this February 18th. And has site been determined yet?
It's going to be at our office.
At our office, at 5:00. So if anybody's interested to see how we're doing in the finance committee or how the office is doing, we'd be more than welcome to attend for that. And going through the, I can't see the pocket watch.
Oh, you're right. You're right, Harold.
So I appear to say that.
They'll be there next time.
They'll be here next time. I just signed a check, so apparently we still have money. But we're good.
People want cash more, okay.
Thank you. Personnel, Joe.
Thank you. We've been meeting late with regard to the hiring of a regional planner. And I'd like to thank the committee members for their efforts in those regards and those of Catherine and Bethany as well, who are working hard to effort that project.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? The executive committee, we met just before this meeting. Our agenda items include a request for Brown Fields revolving loan fund, banking resolutions and legislative items. The only action we, official action we took was to approve of the recommendation from the Brown Fields committee to approve the Brown Fields RLF revolving loan fund for, I forget the name.
Grant Works.
Grant Works. And they're in Montpillyer. And it will be an interest-bearing loan, the first one we've had, I believe. Project review, Alicia.
All right. So behind the December minutes, you'll see the monthly business report for project review in January's meeting. We had three projects that we reviewed. The first one was a 248 permit for AT&amp;T Wireless in Grand Isle. You'll see that we did not find that to have substantial regional impact, and we are undetermined with the conformance of the regional plan, as we're waiting for additional information on aesthetics. Project number two was an Act 250 Franklin Foods in Ennisburg. We found this one to not have substantial regional impact and to be in conformance with the regional plan. Project three, another Act 250 Franklin County Industrial Development Corp. We found this one in, also in St. Albans, just to clarify. No substantial regional impact, and we found it to be in conformance with the regional
Any questions for Alicia? Do you need any action from us? I don't think so.
No.
Thank you.
Can I just add, it's kind of noted here in the project comments for number two project type. I just wanted to compliment the committee and our staff on working in a really cooperative and constructive manner with the developer on the project to work on a condition that's noted here to allow Franklin Foods to access JBU Drive, a road near Hanaford, as that area is further developed. That will really be beneficial for the area to give additional options for trucks. And it was a nice cooperative effort to bring something to the attention of the developer that wasn't included, and they were willing to add that as a condition. So jointly, that was presented to the district commission to be added as a condition. So that was a nice result.
Thanks for that. We didn't have that.
Yeah, I didn't have that. So they did agree.
That's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation advisory committee, Harold.
We did not meet in January.
Thank you. Energy committee, didn't need anything you want to bring to our attention?
Um, no. What I'll bring to our contention will do Green Mountain Transit. Yeah, because they're related. And Brown Fields committee, last isn't here, but as discussed under the executive committee, we did review and approve a loan application from Connor Contracting for development, redevelopment at Montpillyer Grant Works in Berry, Berry Street, Montpillyer.
The regional plan committee did not need anything you want to bring to our attention, Lynn?
No.
Vermont Economic Progress Council, Al.
They're meeting tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon, also tomorrow morning, but there's no applications for this area.
Thank you. Vermont Economic Progress Council, Al. Sorry, I already do this one. I'm GMT Bob for Catherine.
Well, let Bob take it.
Let me take it. Well, the good news related to the energy committee is, if you all saw the news last night, is Green Mountain Transit did a rollout of their two electric buses. First one's in the state. Hopefully they'll save some money. They're nice and pretty. We had everybody there, a lot of nice speeches. So anyway, so the first electric buses are ready for the fleet. They'll be online actually in March, as they continue to get them ready. The other big thing in Green Mountain Transit is our executive search for new executive director is in process. Catherine may be able to give you more on that, because she's on that committee working on that.
Yeah, so I'll add that there is a search underway for the new general manager of GMT. I do serve on the search committee. The committee met yesterday and narrowed down from the applicants, five or six, I can't remember people, to bring to an interview. So that's moving forward.
Why has it been so hard to maintain executive director for a long period of time?
I don't know that I can answer that. With one answer, you know, I think they've all left for different reasons. It is a very hard job in a very complicated industry that requires a wide range of skills that is not, that are not commonly held by one person.
So are those tasks shared with the COO?
There is not a COO.
Maybe that's part of the problem.
There's differing opinions on management structure, and we are hoping that the new general manager, once hired, will give a recommendation to the board about what changes can create to the structure of your organization. Because that is, the way that organization is set, that's fully within the purview of the general manager, is to set stuff.
One other question. Are the buses, are they hybrid or fully electric?
Fully electric. The only non-electric item is the auxiliary heater. They do, they run on, I think they run on diesel, right? The heaters.
Yeah, if it's really, really cold, they run.
There is some electric heat, but it's like when it's really cold, they need to give a little more boost. That's it.
Where are they running from? What routes?
They're gonna, they're gonna run downtown. The North Avenue to Williston line is where they're gonna start it. And you probably select what line based on the distance range you get out of the charge. So try to get a day's worth of work out to come out, right? So as we learn more, we'll be able to expand and understand what's being done with it.
So that's what, excuse me, that's what they're expecting to do, is get a day's worth of use out of one charge?
Yeah, I believe that's, actually, if it's, if it's a two, actually, may alternate between the two buses. Maybe the two buses cover the day. Those two.
What, was there a minimum range for each of those buses? For a charge?
They're actually, our agreement with Burlington Electric is we have to actually use it for a certain number of hours, because they help pay for it, so we have to use it a certain amount. If we don't use it as much as our agreement with them, we actually owe them money. So we're gonna balance it out to get the maximum out of it.
Yeah, but I mean, the design of the buses themselves, they must have had a minimum range, maximum range on the.
I don't know about a minimum. Yeah. Well, I guess I, what do you, you mean that they?
When it's five below and.
Oh, oh, so, I'm trying to remember. They put, they actually put the numbers in the press release. It was a, I can't remember.
I don't remember either.
I hate to say the number and do it wrong. Yes, there is, they did give us a range for hot weather and cold weather numbers. But again, we tried to design it so that.
And that will fit in with the daily.
That will fit in with what we're trying to do.
And when they did testing with them, with a test model last year, the results were within the range of the manufacturer. But I don't remember what that range was.
I don't want to quote, because I'll be off by a unit. And we've actually got some data from other cold cities, so we've got some actual data from actual buses that we evaluated also before we did this, before we selected them.
Al.
This reminds me, I was reading recently, that there's a bill before the legislature on future for carbon, reduction of carbon and getting the state by 2020, 50, I think, or zero. I'm wondering if that bill moves forward, even if it doesn't move forward, is that something that the energy committee should start considering in terms of helping our municipalities think through planning for transition of their vehicles?
We could.
What do they buy, who are you gonna have that's gonna be maintaining that electric engine?
We're training our guys to.
You've got your own people that are.
Part of, part of the deal is training for maintenance. And Proterra has support guys, and they have Boston, I think it's Boston, Connecticut, that are close by also. So if we really get desperate with your guys, we're gonna travel distance together if we need it.
And there's, they traditionally take a lot less maintenance than.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
But there is like a whole separate list that we have to keep stocked and.
Right.
Yeah.
We all learn that from our vehicles that we drive, from our cars to our trucks. What used to be able to do in your backyard, now if you don't have to fix a thousand dollar computer to hook through it, you ain't doing anything.
Clean water advisory committee staff.
The clean water advisory committee also didn't need. The upcoming item that the advisory committee and this board needs to be aware of is that clean water service provider requests for proposals will be coming out the end of the month or the beginning of February. If you remember the bill that was passed last year, will set up clean water service providers in each basin in the state, starting with the Lake Champlain area. And so for us, that's the Lemoil Basin, the Mississauga Basin, and the direct drainage to Lake Champlain Basin, which encompasses our region plus parts of Chittenden and Addison Counties. And this clean water service provider will be responsible for setting up a basin council that's made up of municipal, nonprofit, regional, and private interests that will take a grant from the state of Vermont and allocate those funds toward projects to achieve the stated phosphorus reduction goal for that basin. So over the next couple of months, we will be working with our partners in the Mississauga and the Lemoil and in the direct drainage basin to see if it makes sense for NRPC to be the clean water service provider and to put a proposal in. The hope would be that whoever puts in the proposal for the clean water service provider has the consensus of the other groups when the proposal's put in, so that we don't waste time competing with each other. I think as we talked about before, when the bill was under consideration last year, there's a lot of benefit for NRPC to be the clean water service provider, and there's a lot of opportunity for us to work with our really strong partners. We're really lucky in this region that we have such strong partners. So there'll be a series of meetings in the month of February in each of the basins where the partners are going to talk about, you know, what makes sense, who might be interested in being a clean water service provider. And so I'll have more information for you at the February meeting about how those conversations went and what the general thoughts are about whether it should be NRPC or another group.
Did they divide the lake into two? Because I didn't hear Addison and Rutland.
Addison, and so there's the direct drainage, the north part, and then there's direct drainage in the south. So part of Addison is in the one that we're in in the north.
Because there's the Otter, which comes, I mean, all the way from. Calhoun, I think.
Right.
I guess the next update. Could you talk about the effect that President Trump's initiative EPA to reduce the requirements of municipalities for dumping silage in heavy storms into the river tributaries and the lake?
I can try, yeah.
Interstate law, food for food. That his EPA requirements have any effect on our daily lives in terms of protecting
That might change by February, too.
Northwest Vermont Regional Foundation.
I have no update. There's no new news there.
And then Office.
Do you want to go first, Timlin?
Sure. Then wrapping up things slowly. Been spending a lot of time on a grant with EDA. It's FY18 disaster resilience grant. And I think we've talked about it at previous board meetings. We filed a pre-application for this grant back in October. We were asked two weeks ago to file a full application in a week, so it took quite a bit of time. That grant is sort of split into three different categories. One is essentially to support the farm viability program and healthy roots. Another part is for equipment, again, mostly to support healthy roots, and that includes a refrigerated van that we would hook up at our new electric charging station on site, and also some software to help healthers better connect producers with consumers or really restaurants. And third portion deals with flood resiliency within the region, so it would be money to more of the regional planning staff to help municipalities do town updates, regulation updates, explore the possibility of a regional RFP, or sorry, NFIP regulation, if municipalities are interested in that. So NRPC would potentially be a service provider and do NFIP regulation for municipalities. What else is in that piece? There's a transportation piece as well that would support some GIS work that Bethany would like to do, based on a VTrans model that would kind of look at transportation assets within the region, and their condition, size, and using that model to identify areas that may be really prone to flooding, and easy enough information to help municipalities better do capital budgeting and planning around that. So yeah, that's a half million dollar grant. We've spent it over two years. We're very hopeful that we're here back this week, that that's a yes. I dreamed last night that we got a verbal. So I'm still thinking about work at home. What else? Really, the big one is handing off the Albert Childcare Center project to Greta. I must take up a bunch of time trying to wrap up a bylaw project in Georgia before I leave. Yeah, working through my due list, making sure I've got notes for whomever takes over. And yeah, trying to wrap my head around not being here anymore. Very weird to think about, doesn't seem real.
They'll come to the meeting.
It's true. It's true. So yeah.
My official last day is.
February 12th. I'll be taking some time off before that, hopefully, to do some house stuff, mostly. Yeah, that's official last day. I'll be a phone call away, so if you don't show up, just let me know. You know where to find me. It's been really great working here the past almost six years. It was a really hard decision to leave. So in almost six years, yeah. It would be six years, I think, on March 1st, so just a month short.
But you could stay.
Sound of contract. It was a really hard decision. I really, I really, I talked with Catherine throughout the whole thing, so she knows how difficult it was for me to make that decision. But it was really about being closer to home and having more time with family. So, before I start crying, I'm gonna stop. And just thanks to all of you for.
If I could add publicly that, behalf of the community of Grand Isle, many people are saddened here that you're leaving, but did wish me to express the thanks for all that you've done for our town.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks. An extended thanks from the community of Fairfield as well.
I think a round of applause. Mr. Chairman, we need a proper. I thought you might ask for a moment of silence. Yes, Al.
I'd like to make a motion, so that's part of the record that we can point to in the future, to thank Taylor for his excellent service to all the communities of Franklin, Grand Isle Counties, and for, and to this board and to his organization.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes are unanimous. Thank you.
Well, it's hard to follow that. I know, I get to go. Maybe I should.
I know. Hey, I told Catherine to come back.
So yes, we would very much miss Taylor at the office. It's been a great six years, and so we will miss having him there. But as I said, when we knew he was departing, people who tend to be excellent at their jobs, people who are excellent at their jobs always tend to leave their jobs in an excellent place when they go. So we are fortunate that Taylor is doing that and leaving us in a very good place in order to pick up the projects and keep his successes going after he is down south at Chittenden and RPC. So we'll still get to see him and work with him.
It's true.
That's nice. All right, other things. So legislatively, a couple of things have been mentioned. There is an Act 250 bill that would make significant changes. One of them would be to get rid of the district commissions and replace that with a statewide professional board. That includes two district seats, depending upon where the project is located. Additionally, it does a lot of changes to some of the criteria, many of which are really vague changes and would need, I think, a lot of work in order to be successfully implemented. And then there's a final piece that the executive committee discussed at their meeting and does not support, and so gave me the direction that I cannot support it legislatively, and that is, that would extend jurisdiction for Act 250 to areas around interstate interchanges, regardless of project size. And so projects within a certain radius of interstate interchanges would need to go through Act 250 unless the regional planning commission determines that the municipal bylaws have certain provisions that would require smart growth principles to be implemented, basically. That's my summary of it. The language is, of course, different legislatively. So the executive committee believes that that's not really a good direction to go, so I'll be opposing that legislatively. And I would say that that position is shared by, as far as I know, every other regional planning commission in the state at this point that's taken a position one way or the other on it, so we'll share that. There's also a housing bill that's going through, S237. In its current draft, it has a lot of changes to Chapter 117 to encourage and require municipalities to enable more and denser housing in the municipalities, but from the latest I've heard, most of that language will not stay in the bill. If it goes back in, I'll keep you updated about what those provisions are. The finance committee, when we meet in February, will be doing a budget, a mid-year budget review a month late, but we'll still be getting to it. The hiring meeting's kind of got in the way of finance this month, so we'll put that off a little bit. We're working on a few new projects for municipalities. We're doing a planning effort around Highgate's wastewater and water examination. We're doing some master planning in North Hero in the village area, and we'll be working with Sheldon on doing a bike pad infrastructure master plan, the timing of which I think is really perfect, because the governor's budget included the local match funding for the Lemoil Valley Railroad connection completion. And if you're not aware, Sheldon's the one place where they meet. So the Mississauga Valley Rail Trail and Lemoil Valley Rail Trail will meet in Sheldon. So them getting a grant to look at bike pad and recreation opportunities is really good There is an applicant briefing tomorrow for municipalities who experienced damage in the most recent storm, so people will be there for an applicant briefing. I think everybody should have been notified of it. Yeah, Brad's knowing, and others. Okay, great. And then finally, there was some possibility that the municipal roads grants and aid program was going to go through some substantial changes for next year, because the agency of natural resources decided that it would be best if the agency of transportation actually managed the program instead of the agency of natural resources. And so there was a potential that the RPC role and the technical assistance that goes along with that would actually go away. But we've been going through a series of meetings with the agency of transportation, and the latest news is that as of this coming fiscal year, if, as long as it's approved legislatively for FY21, that the grants and aid program will remain the same. It will be administered by VTrans, so there will be some changes to the program, but the basic face of the program, that municipalities see with the RPC staff on the ground doing technical assistance and training, will not change for next year. We will be working with the agency over the course of the next two years to create self-sufficiency in the program, so that that technical assistance that we provide on the ground will be needed, because the local staff will be much more versed and trained, and we're hoping to more automate the payment if the, if the funding continues and make that a more standalone, independent program that doesn't need that level of program support. That would be a success if we're able to achieve that. So that's what we'll be working toward over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any questions for Catherine?
Yeah, the rail trail. I'm understanding it's going, the one in the Lemoil Valley. There's quite a stretch in Fairfield that's not done, and maybe all the way to Cambridge?
That is not.
Not done.
Correct.
Is that the area they're focusing on?
There, there's, anywhere east of, so the section in Cambridge and Jeffersonville that was completed, anything east of that to the St. Johnsbury section, and then west of that to Swanton.
How many miles in that, Tim?
I don't know how many miles yet to be completed.
Because I've seen some of it in Fairfield, and it's going to require a lot of funding, a lot of work.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you may have some resistant landowners, but I mean, you still have an easement going. I mean, the legal ability to do it is there, but there's some landowners, I think, that are going to resist.
Usually. Yeah, I think that's the case with any trail project like that. This is a unique one, in that you don't have to acquire the right of way, because it's already owned by the state.
Right.
It's just reestablishing that.
Right, and it is already used as a civil rail trail.
Someplace. Someplace, I mean, some places, it's literally, they're going to have to rebuild their bridges, but.
Right, there are a lot of bridges that need to be rebuilt and fixed, and the Sheldon one is one that was done in this past year, but there are bridges elsewhere.
It'll be exciting once it's done.
It really will be.
And the orbit is a hundred-year flood area.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Montune bikes.
I like that.
Suspension bridges.
What was that?
The state-owned.
The state-owned right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
Yeah.
When they bailed out the LaMoyale Valley Railway, that was an asset they acquired when they went out of business, so.
The Grants and Aid, if the state takes it over, you're still going to write the checks. The money's still going to go through your office?
That's the one piece that we're not sure about for next year. We're kind of hoping that we can automate that and that the state can release the funds, and we'll skip the middle step.
And the second part is, of that, is because the state is so particular about everything that has to be done to do a project, some of these projects that they want, the towns want to do, are they going to be laid, put aside for two years because they're going to go through the study of this, the study of that? I mean, that's going to be just a plain waste of money.
That was one of our big concerns about the move from Agency of Natural Resources to Transportation because all the Transportation projects go through a certain process.
Yes.
And this Grants and Aid Program did not have to go through that same process. But what we understand is that they have been able to address that concern because Grants and Aid projects are largely maintenance projects. They're construction of maintenance active, maintenance projects, then they are exempt from that process. So we have confirmed that verbally. I would like to see it in writing before the switch is actually made. And the switch won't be official until the budget is adopted by the legislature and the money is in Transportation side of Clean Water Bill budget instead of the Natural Resources side.
That's what I hear pretty often, and I'm sure that we all know that it may not happen quite as much now, but the Transportation budget, it's rated so many times for other projects that all of a sudden, well, we're going to take that $2 million that we set aside, and we're going to give it over here so we can build a bike path, a drilling gun or something.
Well, this is Clean Water Fund budget money, so it's not, it's actually Clean Water Fund budget money that would go to Transportation, not Transportation money.
So it's going to be earmarked only for that, and it can't be rated?
Correct.
I don't see that rating.
What does the Agency of Natural Resources want to shift it out?
I can't answer that question.
Because they seem more logical to me than.
We thought, yeah, we thought it was a really good partnership.
They're overwhelmed. I just, I know the interaction we have with that agency on a particular level, they are overwhelmed and understaffed.
They can't handle another project.
So, you know, I mean, it's becoming, we have legislators that are promoting that the particular form of regulatory role that we are playing should be at A and R, but we have over 90 cases we've referred to them, and they've acted on a handful of them. And it's because they're understaffed. So, I mean, it comes a point when you have to realize you maybe have to offload something, and that might end a little hanging fruit. I'm just speculating, but.
Agenda item six, Healthy Roots Collaborative in your packet. You should have an advisory committee rules of procedure. It's a draft as it is now. Catherine, you want to give us just a brief explanation, please?
So first, I will introduce it by saying that these rules of procedure are modeled after the rules of procedure for our Transportation Advisory Committee, and your careful readers may have noticed that. Because there are two places where Healthy Roots should have been, should have been there, but instead TAC was there, so there were two places in that, those are what we made in the last paragraph. So if you're a careful reader, you would know that we don't, we try not to reinvent whatever possible, and we build on what has been working, and that is a success. So this Healthy Roots Collaborative, when it came under the NRPC, they had an existing advisory committee that helped guide its work, and so what made sense to us when we brought it under us is to allow that advisory committee to still remain in place and function as it has been, but to pull in a board seat and to make it clear that the advisory committee now reports to our board rather than as a standalone committee just reporting, just reporting themselves and just working on the Healthy Roots program. So that's what these rules of procedure do. The Healthy Roots Advisory Committee looked at the rules of procedure in a couple of meetings in the fall, and they have endorsed this draft, so they are very comfortable with it and excited to be part of NRPC.
Questions, comments?
Just a little wordsmithing?
Yes.
Line number 15, I think "the" should go in front of annual.
Yeah, it should go the other way around.
Annual HR.
Yes, thank you.
Line 33, you may want to put in "in" after participating. Other than that, other than the TAC, it's good.
So would you like to make a motion that we adopt the rules of procedures for those changes?
I think we do that, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And you will know that there is a regional, that there is a seat on that for a regional commissioner, so we will put a fragment of that on the next agenda.
Commissioner announcements. Lon, I think you have one?
Yes, talking about the disposal of tires. As most people here on the board know, that last May, we in Franklin, in a way, had a major issue with Greenup Day of tires. Everyone in the area, even from outside of town, dropped off hundreds upon hundreds of used tires in front of our fire department, and we ended up being stuck with the bill of getting rid of these tires, and we ended up spending, I believe, close to $4,000 of tire disposal. And I had asked this board, I think it was last June or July, to see if we could come up with a plan or solution, getting the community's collaboration, getting together or whatnot, to see what we can do to get rid of these tires at a cheaper rate or whatnot. I know that may be ways away yet, but I can, we can see it coming. And through the company that I work with, we have found an outlet to get rid of these tires at a much cheaper cost. They're going to Canada, and Canada is charging $35 a ton for the tires. We just have to get them there. Yes, there's some requirements for permit-wise. We need to get barcodes and whatnot for specific vehicles that can cross the border. Not just anyone can show up at this place to dump tires, but it is my understanding with the person that I've been communicating with there that they can take pretty much any amount of tire that we can bring them. The only thing that they, one of the criterias is that the tires need to be clean. They can't be all mud and dirty on the inside, outside, whatever. Some of them have water on the inside, just, I mean, we all know that it's hard to get the water out of those tires, they know that. Water's not a problem. But for whoever transports them there, the less water you have in them, the better because you're paying for that water. So when you drive in there, you get on the scale, and you're going to weigh up, and it's $35 a ton regardless if you have a gallon or 300 gallons of water.
Was that sugar down to the profit price per tire? What's a tire weigh for 15?
I can't tell you. The only tires that we've been bringing up there are all tractor-trailer tires because that's what we deal with. And those are pretty heavy, and on a trailer, we can get close to 10 ton on a trailer. So we're looking at $350 for a trailer load of tires, but that's a lot of tires. And I, just throwing this out for, we can have time to talk about it and see if this is something that we can get, I don't know, a deposit site for, one in Franklin County, Grand Isle County, and I didn't know if the state could provide the transportation equipment to get these tires up there. I, I don't know, I'm just talking out loud here. I'm just looking at this as an avenue to get rid of these tires at a much cheaper cost than what, at least what we've encountered.
Where is it in Canada developed?
It's at Lafarge's, which is at the end of Route 15, if you go through Champlain. They're the ones that use the tires, they need the tires.
Now, again, we're just talking, does your cousin have the rights to truck in Canada? Eric?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Not with ad plates. Not to do this.
You can't, you can't run ad plates in Canada anymore.
So it's.
What do they do with the tires?
Believe it or not, they burn them.
Yeah.
And they burn them to dry powdered cement. And they know how to do it, so it's environmentally friendly.
They scrub it, scrub it, you know?
Yes.
Water energy.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you're looking to coordinate with local municipalities, kind of put out your feelers for a driver that can cross the border, and then we would have to make arrangements for them to be approved to this site?
Yes. It's not just anybody that can go into this site, but I mean, once this person is approved and whatnot, like I said, we need barcodes. A specific tractor and trailer needs to be on the barcode. You can't get up that following morning before and say, well, we got a breakdown, it's got to be a different unit. It doesn't work that way. That unit that was set up with a barcode is the unit that needs to go up there. They're pretty picky about that to cross the border. Myself, I was looking or hoping that the Department of Motor Vehicles or whatever, V-Trans or something, could provide a piece of equipment. We have a set date, July whatever, we got one, two, three trailer load of tires. That unit can take up a load. That's what I was hoping for. We could possibly have an independent, if you know someone or whatnot. My company is set up for it. I did the footwork to set ourselves up, but I'm trying to stay out of it. I don't want to create a conflict of interest. So that's why I was hoping someone else could do the transportation. And if, that's it. If anyone is interested in doing.
You said tractor has to be barcoded as well as the.
Yes, the power unit and the trailer needs to be permitted.
So it's not easy to do it with a container?
When I set my company up, I made a phone call to a specific firm that knows how to do the permitting. It was $150 to pay this person, but I mean, it was, it took two days to do it. All I did is provide all the information that he asked for. It was a small fee for us to get it done, get it done right. When you cross the border, you have the right paperwork, the right barcode, no hassles. You don't need hassles when you're crossing the border. It's, and it's been.
Do you want to throw some to the broker?
No.
Al, you got a question or a comment?
Yeah, well, after this meeting, we'll talk again to the Southwest District. You said tractor trailers, can we use a regular truck with the extended?
Bucks? I'm sure you probably could.
So let me talk to you after the meeting so I can get some information from you.
Okay.
Yes, so I'm just looking online and seeing Greenup Vermont, I guess they're the ones that do Greenup Day? It seems like they're dealing with tires already. Because I know our town, we don't get any, not like you did, but they're being collected, and it seems like Greenup all across Vermont, they're probably getting tires too. Could we go to the people that are running Greenup Vermont and tell them of this collection of resources and information that you have about the disposal of tires? You may have found something that is cheaper than the way they're viewed handling it now, and they may do this as a cost reduction to switch to the methods that you've identified, and we don't have to have any involvement in it. My concern is that if we do it here in Franklin, Grand Isle, suddenly everybody starts to hear, oh, just take your tires to Greenup, they'll get rid of a board. Not how they do it, but they do. And so it'd be nice to make sure it's the state, and I think this is kind of a statewide program, is aware of this, and maybe they could take advantage of the great work that you've done to find some outlets.
I'm all good with that, but at the same time, I mean, I was wondering if these people are paying big money to get rid of their tires? I mean, there's going to be a cost somewheres, and even if someone had to pay a dollar a tire to get rid of it as a fee, to create some, something to help pay to get rid of those tires for the transportation, I didn't know if we could throw that in there, but like I said, I say a dollar, but whatever, I'm just saying, some revenue to help compensate the transportation costs.
A dollar would almost cover the cost.
Yes.
And a dollar is cheap.
Yes.
Because you're talking two truck tires and five tractor tires, 15, 20 dollars.
Yes, that's why I thought a fee would.
I think the only problem with that would be like, in Fairfield, there isn't one station who grab your greenup bags and you leave it at the side of the road, the town clerk by and picks it up. So typically what we see are piles of tires in intersections and on the corner of the road. So there would be, like, it would be hard for us to ask for that dollar fee for those tires because they're driving, you know, down the road to dump them and waiting for the truck to pick them up. But I agree that would help alleviate these.
Is Greenup aware of this is becoming a serious burden for towns?
Yes.
I don't know if there were Franklin's issues from previous years, who said yesterday.
I think Greenup is a very small organization and basically funds the plastic, green plastic bags, coordinates, dropping them off at each town. I don't think they have a large organization to handle this type of thing statewide and to coordinate it. Personally, I don't.
So their sponsors are Casella and Subaru of New England.
Right.
And those are their two primary sponsors. Those are two pretty big companies that, especially Casella, they should know about this waste, these waste streams.
They, they may. They charge you $2 to $5.
Right.
And they're ready for a buck.
Right, they charge, they charge you $5 for a small tire.
Yep.
If the tire's 17 or 18, it's like $7 or $8, and if it's a tractor tire, it's so much a pound for it. And, but I don't know about the other towns, but not my town, we actually give, I don't know, just $250 or $500 every year for Greenup. We pay for the.
Close towns do.
So it's not funded by the state as a fund, the state actually gives us the bag, don't they?
So typically on a warning, you'll sign on our warning, it says $50 to Greenup, but really that's going to the state office. They have one employee, and then select boards will put it in their budget for maybe food for the volunteers, or, and yeah, you'll get some Greenup bags. V-Trans usually brings them to the town clerk's office. But in my town, we had not a Greenup gate, but we had a separate, we worked with Northwest Solid Waste District, and we would actually have a big bin for metal, and we also had one for tire. And we, obviously, people came in and we regulated, and they paid $2 a tire, and we filled a whole, because we have marinas across the lake. And we filled a whole, because we have marinas across the lake from us and tires wash up on our shore a lot. And so it's, it's a big problem for us too. And, and, but we were able to dispose of a lot. We thought by bringing these large containers to the town in the middle of the summer, when you have the most residents, we got rid of a lot of old washing machines in the backyard. We even offered, firemen offered transportation, took their trucks to go get this stuff just in the spirit of, you know, cleaning the town. It wasn't roadside stuff, it was what's in the back of people's yards or sheds or whatever. But, but definitely we worked with the Northwest Solid Waste District on that.
But your idea actually is, because I know in our town, and when I spent a lot of years on a select board and Neil, I know you're, you're the same thing in the village. People pay $5 if you have a tire changed over at your garage. That person, because we get truckloads dumped on the side of the road. I mean, there are not one or two tires here, there are truckloads where you fill a ton truck. So not only are you paying to get rid of that tire, I'm paying two men, $20 an hour or $25 an hour to go out there, put their lives in harm's way, crawling down into the ditches and everything to get these tires up out of there, to bring them back to the garage, then load them again and send them down and pay big money to get rid of them. It's a huge expense and I know exactly what you're saying because I dealt with it for years.
Anyway, it's just food for thought and see where we go with it.
Did this get brought up with the legislative session attack? Did it miss the number of attack? No, I don't know.
No, it hasn't been brought up, but it may be a good, we should have brought it up. We had the legislators here. But I had, and I think on another committee that I was on, had floated the idea to the legislators to try to pass a bill where the tires would have a $5 fee when you purchase the tire. If there was a $5 fee when you took that tire back, you got your $5 back. You would be safe to leave your car parked in your driveway, but you'd get up in the morning and tire it. But that would solve the problem. But the legislators do not want to put a fee onto the tires sold in the state of Vermont.
That's how it operates in Canada, pay X number of dollars for a tire. Then I asked, what do I do in line? He said, no, I just take care of the pricing.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under Commissioner announcements? Any other business? Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor? All in favor? Opposed? And we have pie to share with Taylor to ease celebrating leaving work not so much celebrated.
We got some pie to cry over.
Cry pie. Tyler and Taylor, are you going to give us a list of chicken?
The English coach? Sure, sure. Catherine made me dig through my loyalty to N R P C. I'm a mole in N R P C, so if you do need this kind of information, I'm sure.
Well, you made it three years longer than someone.
That's what I hear. That's what I hear.